Good morning and welcome to the May 6, 2014 Glendale Budget Study Session Number Two. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for indulging us yet again for a morning session.
Roll.
Oh, yeah, let's take roll call, that's right.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Montero?
Here.
Eber?
Here.
Here, Sinanian.
Here, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, this is-
And one more item of business to dispense with I'd like to publicly state that we posted this agenda on May 13th. The meeting on May 13, 2014 was posted on Thursday, May 8, 2014, on the Bulletin Board outside. You may now proceed.
Thank you, we've covered all the legalities, so let's proceed.
Certainly. Budget Study Session Number Two. Last week you looked to the future, five-year financial forecast, and really teased the elements and themes that were going to materialize in the department budgets for the coming year. Next week, we have you coming back for the CIP, Capital Improvement Program, and an update both for the city as well as GWP, and an update on the schedule of fees and charges and the cost study that was done by the city. So, with no further ado, because we have a long way to go and a short time to get there, Smokey and the Bandit once featured as a line and song, we will go to what it is that the meat of the matter is. We are focused on Glendale-based budgeting. Now, you've heard of MBO, you've heard of Zero Base, you've heard of all the different kinds of budgeting. We have developed and cultivated this system that seems to work very well, and it really takes into account the cascading synergy of the council's role in setting the tone for this organization, for this community. So, as you know, we establish city council priorities, and then we validate those periodically through statistically valid random sample surveying and other means of collecting data. We tie those into the departmental strategic goals, which will act as a scorecard for all of our departments and all of our entire management team, and then use the key performance indicators as measures to tell us how well we're doing on the day-to-day stuff. We'll also cover today's summary of appropriations for the coming year's budget, including all of our various funds, and we will do a rather rapid-fire depiction of the individual departments, respective departments' budget summaries, and then certainly have time for questions of the council. When we talk about these priorities, as I say, council sets the tone, and so we use these priorities really as the framework. If something, if a project or a program or a request falls outside of the four corners of what those priorities outline, we generally are more circumspect about moving and making an investment of time and money. But to the extent that everything that you'll see today ties back to what you have articulated as those nine priorities, that is really what guides what we do and how we do it. We do tie those to the community needs, of course, and as I mentioned, we have the validation and outreach to understand if, in fact, we are in sync with what the community wants to see, and does the community support what the council is doing. That feedback loop is very important to us in understanding as we evaluate and modulate all of our operations. So, the goals, the goals really speak more towards the outcomes that we hope to achieve, and it really is that scorecard defining success for us. We also include, in all the different departments, where applicable, stretch goals, to the extent that we are able to leverage achievement on top of one another and are able to garner some additional level of value for the community. And as I say, the key performance indicators are more outputs. We look at how well and how many and how much of the things that we're doing to ensure a balance between the overarching goals and then the tactics to get us there. These are your priorities from last year, and you'll see there in the Roman numerals, then underscored by evidence of the types of things that we work on that feed back to that priority. So, your number-one priority last year, fiscal responsibility, followed by exceptional customer service, followed by economic vibrancy, and again, you see kind of what some of the defining characteristics are for those goals. Inform and engage community would be number four. Number five is healthy, safe and healthy community. Balanced quality housing is number six. Community services and facilities, infrastructure, mobility, arts and culture, number nine, I'm sorry, 10, we added sustainability.
Is that the order that we had?
That is, that's a great question, because it's, aside from fiscal responsibility and the exceptional customer service, the council really has yet to reorder those in any way. And so, the question for you, as we get into the next element of this presentation, is what is the council's order? You know, do you want to reorder those, or do you want to add different goals? When we talk about the outreach and validation, just so folks know that it isn't just something that we pull out of the air, every four years, we do a statistical random sample survey. We've used Rose Institute, so we've used CSUN, and I believe we've used Cal State Long Beach as well, their public policy program, in an effort to make sure that we're testing statistically valid, reliable means of understanding what people are saying about us. This year, we also had Sorrel Associates confirm the findings of Rose Institute with high propensity voters. And so, you're seeing all of the residents, and then you're seeing a subset of residents telling you effectively the same thing, that people are happy with Glendale, they're happy with what the service is and satisfied with the value that they get, and they're very satisfied and supportive of the council's leadership. Seventy-three percent rated Glendale is an eight or higher as a place to live. I can't think of very many people with an approval rating higher than that. Eighty-five percent either satisfied or very satisfied with all of our city services, and the top three of those departments, not too surprisingly, are reflective of some of those priorities in terms of public safety, fire department being at ninety percent satisfaction, police at eighty percent, library arts and culture at eighty-three. Interestingly, sixty-nine percent said that the city's going in the right direction, and before you think that, well, thirty-one percent must say that you're not going in the right direction, actually, it isn't. I think the number was sixteen percent said that you're going the wrong direction, sixteen percent didn't have an opinion. So, again, more than just a plurality, I would argue more of a mandate that everything that you're doing, you're doing the right way for the right reasons.
Is there a score for the city council?
I would say the sixty-nine percent really is the score for the city council. As we talk about, council sets the tone. And some days, we're better than others, but to the extent that the council is-
That would be a D. If we were in school, that would be a D.
Oh, my God.
You could-
Why can't you be like a glass-half-full kind of person?
I'm just saying.
Then you have a very solid B, that people are satisfied or very satisfied in the wake of the greatest economic setback and downturn since the Great Depression.
So, there's a curve.
You have, you have much to be proud of, sir. And you can see ninety-six percent feel safe in Glendale. That is amazing, considering that we're surrounded on three sides by the big bad city of LA, but yet we're able to make sure that we patrol our streets and provide exceptional customer service.
Question about the fifty-seven percent rated downtown district with an eight or higher. So, what is it about the downtown district that was rated? I mean, is there more specifics?
People like, yes, as a matter of fact, and if you go to a seven or higher, both Montrose and downtown jump up into the seventy-something range of approval. This is just for the eight, but what people are talking about in downtown, the restaurants, the shopping, the vibrancy, that it's a cool place to be. And by contrast, Montrose, you have the same types of descriptors and adjectives, it's quaint, it's unique, it's hometown. You know, the term "Mayberry," even though "Mayberry" is a fictional place, it's kind of nice that folks would associate Montrose with that idyllic location. So, you know, you're seeing all of those types of descriptors in those satisfaction ratings. But at eight or higher, those are pretty good, and again, if you go down to seven or higher, it's very compelling.
Okay, thank you.
We talked about, also, the use of social media. You recall last, two years ago, Glendale Innovation Team Number One focused on developing a cohesive social media platform for the city as a feedback loop, and it has paid off really very, very well. When you think of the messaging that we're able to get out and the way that people communicate increasingly, myself maybe not included in that, but certainly the vast majority of folks seem to be engaged, they're responding back to us. You know, people believe this is safe, this is hip, this is healthy. The kinds of responses that we're getting vis-à-vis social media really kind of outpace any of the marketing and promotion we could pay for out in the news media, and it's viral. It seems to transfer very, very quickly. And folks tell us when they're not happy as well, and we log those, and through the mobile app that we have, we're able to follow through on customer service requests and bring folks, again, that high level of satisfaction. Interesting, and to Mr. Najarian's point, when we look at the council order of the priorities, we asked all the residents, again, priority-based focus that the council has, say, these are the city council's priorities, how do you rate them? And interestingly, maybe not too surprisingly, though, safety and emergencies was the highest number, at seventy-nine percent is what people value most, infrastructure, utility, fiscal responsibility at sixty-five, which was somewhat surprising, because we had held that as number one, the idea being that if you're not fiscally responsible, everything seems to flow from that, but that wasn't the way our respondents viewed it. Recreation, education, neighborhood character, housing, managing growth, and then arts and culture. So, the question back to you, as we just mentioned, have the priorities changed? Or do we have anything that seems superfluous in this challenging economic time? Or do we not have enough up on the screen? Are we encompassing enough, or are we watering down what the capabilities, the capacity of the city is? And it gets that notion of culture of discipline versus culture of service, whether or not everything, based on whatever the order of priorities are from the community, from the council, you know, we double down on those things that are the most important to the most number of folks, or do we try to maintain this balance that we've had here to fore? That really is the question for the council today, and up to our budget hearing scheduled for the twentieth of May, in anticipation of a June 3 adoption.
Mr. Ochoa, you want that answer today, that discussion?
Either today or up to and including the twentieth of May, when we do the hearing for the budget adoption. So, to the extent that you're thinking about this, and honestly, I know you think about this on a pretty regular basis, we want that feedback, because that really sets the tone for what we count, what we measure, and how we measure success.
We had a conference at the Embassy Suites about a year ago, and the one that we just talked about, being the council, that was not my priorities. Mine are more in line with what the public has said and what I'm hearing at the forums for the candidates running. So, I think that our priorities from a year or so ago are out of whack. Now, we're supposed to be responsive to the public, and they put like safety and stuff highest. They talk about traffic and accidents and all that. I think that ought to be at the top, because all the candidates are saying what they're gonna do to eliminate pedestrian accidents and improve the traffic flow and hire more police without the money, but that's where they're putting that stuff.
Most certainly, sir. And I think, as I had mentioned, you know, outside of the fiscal responsibility and the exceptional customer service, all the others existed pretty much in an equilateral basis. The council, and you did make some comments, but the council altogether has not provided that direction to say that priorities three through 10 are in some hierarchy. Number one was the fiscal responsibility, number two is the service, everything else was in a similar plane. My question back to you and to the council is, do you want to continue there, that notion of balance, that culture of service, or do we want to focus on a culture of discipline to say, no, if public safety is the number one, let's, you know, let's talk about what that means and where we put those dollars?
I gave my, I gave my thoughts over a year ago, that, and they haven't changed. So, I don't know, this is what we have, so I've given my input.
As I say, council sets the tone, all five of you together. So, let's talk about the summary of appropriations. I'll turn it back to Bob, and then we'll run through the departments. Bob?
Thanks, Scott. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what I want to do is run through, as you see, a summary of appropriations for all our different fund types. We'll then slice and dice that with some different information, a little bit more detail. I will tell you as well, we will touch on some of the CIP funds. We do have a session next week that will cover the CIP projects in detail. I will mention some of the highlights via the variances within those funds. So, getting right to the numbers, you can see the general fund, we're proposing a $181 million budget for '14, '15. Special revenue funds at $96 million, debt service funds reduced at $3 million, capital improvement funds, $15 million, enterprise funds, primarily GWP, it's $444 million, and the internal service funds at $92 million. And again, I will get in all the detail of those. Gives us a total budget of $833 million that we're proposing. As you've seen this, we've brought this forward in terms of what our authorized position counts are. Our peak, as far as this chart goes, was in '05, '06 at $1,995. Last year, at $1,588. This year, we're reducing down to $1,583 in terms of our authorized proposed positions.
Prior to any of the reorganization that could take place?
Correct.
These are FTEs?
Yes, sir.
So, if someone were to say in front of a group of concerned residents that the workforce of the city of Glendale has increased thirty percent since 2002, that would be a lie?
That would be a lie.
Absolutely. These are the authorized budget numbers from the budget.
Okay, so if there's any folks at home watching, anyone who represents to you that the city of Glendale has grown its full-time employee workforce from the year 2002 or 2003 by thirty percent, that representation is false, and I believe that all the individuals have been provided, all the individuals who may be giving you this information have been provided this FTE count, and I think it goes, crosses the line from being a falsehood into a lie, an intentional lie and misrepresentation. So, the city of Glendale has gone to great lengths to reduce its full-time employees, and I think we're, we might not be done as we continue this budget process. I just wanted to point that out, sorry.
You've seen this slide in the past, again, this is our tri-city comparison with our neighbors, Burbank and Pasadena, in terms of, in the '13, '14 adopted budget, showing you, again, our $1,588 relative to the size of the budget and the population in terms of what our companion cities have next door to us. And then drilling down into what total residents serve per FTE, residents serve per FTE in the general fund, and total budgets FTE per capita, and how we compare. Clearly, there's quite a bit of difference between our numbers and Burbank and Pasadena in terms of the level of effort with the number of folks in the general fund, et cetera.
Truly compelling information, looking at the, you know, this is a market, this is a business, and we do compete, and I think, and to Mr. Najarian's point, that the number of employees, full-time equivalent employees, has dropped down. If you look at the KPIs before you that you have, that we put out each quarter, that are, it's a public document, and you look at the work that gets done with as few people as we have, you can be very proud of the employees that you have.
Looking at the general fund, we have a couple of slides showing the different departmental variations from last year's proposed budget to, or adopted budget, excuse me, to this year's proposed budget and the variances. Administrative Services, Finance, you'll notice a reduction, $615,000. That's primarily due to transferring the utility finance folks back to the utility. We had switched them into here and decided to move them back. Some of the other notable differences within Fire, and again, I will get into the detail by department. This is just an addition of six firefighters with some other offsets, some overtime increases, and primarily, there's a large increase in workers' compensation. As you recall, we've talked about that a number of times in terms of trying to refloat our workers' compensation fund and the deficits that it's had. Fire happens to be one of the higher rates that we charge because of the injuries and claims, so that's a sizable increase within their budget. Library Arts and Culture has an additional library supervisor and some other increases in workers' comp and ISD service charges.
And the ISD, the internal service charge for library and the workers' comp charge for Fire, further indication of how you, you'll see budgets change as we net them out against one another, but the idea is that, you know, we are trying to hold each department as a business unit accountable for its cost. And so, you see that increase for workers' comp, that charge is going back to the department. As Bob says, we rebuild the fund balance, and then there again, on Library Arts and Culture, the idea is to make them whole, to stand alone, that way they can operate, again, as an independent business unit.
The second slide on the general fund with Management Services, again, the variance here is really a combination of things, but primarily the effects of moving the economic development staff out to a brand-new economic development fund, and we'll show you that detail. Transfers, that primarily is the $5 million for the Central Library going to the CIP fund, and this non-departmental is the $2 million to fund the data center upgrades. Looking at the special revenue funds, and we do have a lot of special revenue funds, again, special revenue funds are set up for one particular purpose, typically a federal grant, and separate all the accounting and program activity within those funds themselves. So, let me go through some of the highlights of some of these funds. The CDBG fund, it just has a reduction in some of the salary and programming. Supportive Housing Fund 204 is just a reduction in assistance. Glendale Youth Alliance, decrease in wages and some programming there. Pretty status quo on most of these. Again, these are primarily federal grants. We adjust the programming up or down to fit the allocation from the feds. Some of the other grant funds that we have, as I mentioned, or grant funds, special revenue funds, economic development, this is the brand-new fund we've set up for the economic development staff, and we pulled them out of Management Services, and you'll see that throughout the budget. Onto some of the transportation monies that we receive, Measure R Local Return, there's a big increase this year, primarily that's to fund some of our bus purchases as we go forward. There was a reduction in 256 from last year to this year, that was part of the buses that we bought last year, and I believe in 258, again, there's more bus purchases built into that fund. Moving ahead, final slide on the, or I take that back, third of our four slides of the special revenue funds. Asset forfeiture, that's run by the Police Department, that's just a reduction in programming on some of the overtime. Looking down at the special events, that's just really a reduction in overtime being budgeted.
Bob, I'm sorry, the Measure R Local Return, why does it jump like that again?
Measure R-
254?
That's for bus purchases. We have, I believe, nine buses budgeted and fare boxes.
That's not Measure R, that's the call for projects, right?
No, this is our local annual allocation that we can use for transit operations, transit bus purchases, we can use it for roadway work, so the regional money is the one below that. But this is our match for nine buses, sixty-five percent of it funded by a federal grant, thirty-five percent by a match, but the big portion of this is the part of the bus maintenance facility, which we're going to build this year.
And that's under 254?
That's under 254, yes.
Account 254?
Yes. So, a call for projects comes mostly out of the regional return fund? There are some call for projects in the regular Measure R as well, but in this particular case, we've got probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about $4 million for the maintenance facility, which is, again, about fifty-five percent grant-funded, and then the rest of it is for our bus matches.
And then going to, the last slide is really just the summary of the special revenue funds in total. We have $96.8 million as the proposed budget for those funds. Looking at the debt service funds, we only have two. One of them is finally done, that was the capital lease for the MSB retrofit, that we had our final payment last year, so we're done with that. The Fund 303 is the police building fund, that's the COP, Certificates of Participation, the debt that we have issued for that building. We restructured the debt last summer, if you recall, with Bank of America. However, we have to ramp up our debt service payments over the next several years in order to be able to completely fund that debt over the next eighteen years. Looking at a recap of our CIP funds, again, the Fund 401, that's our general fund, CIP, we've broken it down into the various departments. Again, we will go into nitty-gritty detail next week on all the different projects, but just to highlight some of the differences, we have, reduction here is primarily, within Parks and Rec, they had the Pacific Edison project budgeted last year, this much, $630,000 pretty much is for just miscellaneous park repairs. The increase in the Fire Department, they're different projects, but primarily Station 29 work that's needed. Library, the big spike here is, again, the $5 million coming into Fund 401 from the general fund for the Central Library retrofit.
It's probably worth noting, Bob just said on the Fire project, that's also primarily the retrofit of the building, rehab and upgrade, but also to make sure that it is, can accommodate female firefighters as well. This is one of the last big projects we need to do to make sure that we are ready to receive the, our first female firefighter.
Again, and the transfers, the $2 million here is for the data center, that's going into, oh, I'm sorry, the transfer is the data center on the mine. The $2 million is for our landfill post-closure amounts that we have to set aside for the Schult Canyon landfill.
What are the, I mean, with regard to those improvements to the station to accommodate a female firefighter?
Bathroom, dormitory.
Colleges nowadays have coed bathrooms, showers. You go to any hip restaurant, and there's coed bathrooms. So, to the extent that we're putting a lot of infrastructure, and these are open to strangers, I mean, you go to a coed bathroom, if you're a lady, there could be a stranger walking in next to you. In the colleges and universities, you know, I think all the floors are open, so in a situation like this, where there is a teammate and a camaraderie-
Sure.
-do we still need the separate but equal facilities?
The issues of workplace-
I'm gonna never get in trouble again, I know, but listen, but I really am questioning this.
The issues of workplace, and especially in this particular state, would dictate that we need to have those separate accommodations, chief, I don't know if you want to-
Good morning, Councilman Najarian. The simple answer is yes. You may remember a few years ago, Station 29 was on the board to actually get completely replaced, and, you know, the Financial Times took us away from that, but to make the needed changes that we need for our fire facilities, to have appropriate facilities for female firefighters as well as our male firefighters, is the direction we should be going, and that's the direction that we're trying to go. The facility is really in need of a major upgrade, and since we move, if we move forward with the upgrade, to do it right this time would be the best way for us to go, and add a separate restroom for females in that station.
All right. I mean, even in our public schools, there's this whole bathroom neutrality going on, and as long as we're doing a general upgrade and we can accommodate these changes without a lot of extra expense, I'm okay, but-
Well, I don't want to mislead you. There will be a separate restroom and showering facility for female firefighter, there will be that, and that's really the appropriate way to do it. We're living in these facilities 24/7, 365, and, you know, these are adult men, adult women, you know, we want to avoid any issues of accidental entries into showering facilities and things like that. It's not a college environment, it's a professional workplace, and it's important for us to really try to do it right.
I think a college, I mean, I think a college environment with pubescent teenagers is much worse. I would be much more worried than with professionals who've gone through extensive training and discipline, but anyway, I'm just saying. Thank you.
Do these bathrooms, showers include, like locker facilities?
Lockers, yes.
This is where people would change, they would have to undress-
Yes.
-and put their clothes back on, so I really don't understand how it would be feasible to have them coed.
Right, that's an excellent point, Mayor Sinanian. The current locker room and showers is basically one room, so you come out the shower and you're in one dorm room, so there's no separate changing rooms in that facility either, so this would correct all of those things. I would think even in a college dorm, there would be a separate- I would think even in a college dorm, there would be a separate changing room. If you, and I'm more than happy to take you on a tour of Station 29, and I think once you see it, you would have a clear understanding that, okay, wow, this is really needed. Thank you, Chief.
So to recap, the general fund 401 appropriation request is $9.1 million, slight increase of about $257,000 from the prior year. Looking at the Parks mitigation fee, similar appropriations last year, about $760,000. I think the primary project there is the Fort Stengel Field. Library mitigation appropriation request of $45,000, and then a new fund, what we're trying to do in Fund 409 is separate out anything that's grant-funded, so we're setting up a new fund, and any new projects we have, they're grant-funded, general fund-related but grant-funded, we're gonna put in Fund 409 and leave 401 ultimately just for general fund-funded projects, and we'll have a better accounting for that. All told, our CIP funds, $15.2 million in appropriation, a slight decrease from the prior year. Moving on to enterprise funds, as you know, they primarily are GWP with electric and water, but we do have our recreation fund, parking fund and sewer fund, as well as the refuse fund included within that category. Again, those operate like a business, they have full-cost accounting methods and operate a little bit different than our other governmental funds, which we've seen thus far. Looking at the recreation fund, I think the big change this year primarily is a capital project for the turf replacement. Parking fund, pretty similar increase in M&amp;O and some CIP projects within the parking fund. Sewer fund is an increase for wastewater, CIP and Hyperion are a component that we pay LA for, the Hyperion plant down by LAX. We have the electrics works revenue fund, that is a real combination of different ups and downs, there's some increases in contractual services and purchase power embedded within that, that's basically the operation fund of GWP. The electric depreciation fund, that's where we budget all the capital projects, as you recall, we floated bonds earlier in the year, and this is the programming of that money for projects within the electric utility. Electric customer paid, this is a new fund we've set up to account better for developers or folks that have work that GWP does, we will do the accounting of those projects within this new fund, so that's new appropriation for that purposes. The waterworks revenue fund, that's basically the operation fund for the electric fund, very little change from the prior year. Depreciation fund, again, that's where all the capital ends up within the water utility, and that's primarily the programming for the water bonds that we sold earlier and the capital projects that we have programmed for the next several years with that money. Again, another customer paid fund set up for water, so we can better account for that. Fire communications fund, that's the Verdugo operation, the Tri-City-owned operation, slight reduction, some of the M&amp;O going forward for this year. Internal service funds, and we've talked about a lot of these in the past, these are funds that we set up for centralization of costs for certain functions, fleet, we have set up to account for all the vehicles and equipment that we have and the maintenance of those, there's a little bit reduction in the cost there. However, I think as we talked about earlier, we've upped the rates that we have charged back to our funds to increase the replacement costs that we have not funded in the last several years. Their overall budget, however, is reduced primarily for reduction in insurance. Our joint helicopter fund, that's one we share with Burbank, last year we purchased a brand-new helicopter, which was about $3 million, hence the reduction this year. ISD infrastructure fund, we have three funds set up for information services, we have the infrastructure fund, which is all the hardware, switches, servers, et cetera, there's an increase there for the, primarily for the data center, there's reductions in some M&amp;O and some other areas. The ISD applications fund, basically, again, some netting going up, different projects, primarily increase in some of the capital outlay for the various projects that are going on in that area. Unemployment insurance, a small increase, or a decrease, rather, liability insurance, that's the fund where we buy all our insurance from to cover all the various city operations, we have a slight decrease there. Workers' comp, you notice a rather large increase here, again, that's, costs are going up, our claims experience has gone up a little bit more costly, and again, that fund has a large deficit, so we're trying to amortize that over time.
Now, these, I'm sorry, this is solely for the purchase of insurance policies, this isn't our reserve for liability payouts? Because we have a fund that is a reserve for liability-
Yeah, liability insurance is our fund that we buy insurance for and pay our claims for trip and falls and other things. We buy our outside counsel through the liability insurance-
And pay our claims.
And pay our claims.
Above our self-retained-
Right, we have insurance, yes, we have coverage-
Or below our umbrella.
And workers' comp is our self-funded workers' compensation fund, we do in-house claims with that, so that's basically a small insurance company for workers' compensation.
I'm sorry, so one of these funds, the city attorney can correct me, we were low, I mean, we had depleted these funds, and it was our goal to somehow replenish those. Has that, I mean, we had a couple of those big payout cases and landslide cases-
Bob, I speak to that, but yeah, the landslide case had set us back for quite a number of years, and I think we've recovered from that starting this year.
And I will show you that detail. Liability was pushing $10 million deficit, we have actually positive fund balance again because of some of the transfers we had put in several years ago, we scraped money from various areas to basically refloat the liability fund. Workers' comp is another story, we're doing that slowly over many years, we're raising our rates back to where we can get that fund out of a deficit position. Again, medical insurance, that's really just our increases in our medical insurance costs, the rest of these are pretty well-stable. Wireless fund has some decreases primarily for capital outlay for items that were purchased last year. All told, $92 million for internal service fund budgeted totals.
Okay, so you've seen what we look like on paper for the, or in the numbers, what we look like for the coming year, we're gonna show you now the departments and what the overarching goals for those departments are going to be. We have all of our department directors and their management staff here, if you have questions, I will run through this fairly quickly because you've seen this now, this will be the third year, so you know how the format works, but certainly if you have questions about any of the KPI that kind of animate what we do on a daily basis, or the overall goals for the current year as we talk about goal attainment, or for the coming year, please feel free to stop and we'll bring the departments up. I think it's worth noting that you'll see that we have a very high degree of goal attainment for the current year's strategic goals, but very few departments are projected to be at 100% come June 30. And I think that speaks to the notion of, you know, the number of goals that we have, the amount of work that we are wringing out of the employee base that we have, and so we are right at maximum capacity. We're doing lots of good work on a day-to-day basis, we're coming up ever so short on the, on these large overarching goals, but it speaks more to this issue of, you know, you can only run so far, so fast, for so long, and we're seeing that play out in real time now, which then has an impact on the expectations of the community for services going forward. So, let's run through these, and again, feel free to ask questions as we go. First up, administrative services, you'll recall for all of our general fund departments, this generally, this box up here in the upper-left is very straightforward in terms of salaries, benefits and M&amp;O, they don't have a special fund that they accrue to. Personnel on the upper-right-hand side, you could see, again, we are very streamlined, but you'll see how the, in management and non-management work in the different departments, it hints at the type of work that's being done by that department. And then you have the key performance indicators, these are obviously, as you have the full book on your, in front of you, these are just a smattering of the ones that we use to, again, help keep score. So you have the actual from 12/13, first, second, third, fourth quarter, projected, and then the projected year-end. In terms of goals going forward, we expect administrative services to be 93% complete. Overall, we have in fact moved forward with the RFQ process for the Tier 2 ERP system, that actually will be an investment on the city's part on the front end, but could very well yield savings in the seven figures going forward, so we would recoup our investment very, very quickly if we're able to transition from the system that we have today versus something that is more in line with our organization size and industry standard. We talk about OPEB, that's been a discussion with council in the context of meet and confer, we need to do something, what that something is will depend on where the council ultimately wants to go. Expenditure control budget program and revised budget policies work in tandem, the department is working with all of our other departments to give maximum flexibility under a certain threshold, as agreed to by council, to operate their budgets the best way they can to achieve the greatest amount of savings, and if they're able to achieve savings, then to be able to keep a portion of that savings for departmental priorities and then kick the rest back to the general fund as we do today. But that means allowing the relatively few people that we have today to have as much latitude as possible to operate the business. When we look at going forward for the next year, the next step in this phased-in approach for the Tier 2 RFP, actually move forward the project and funding plan, is a high priority for this department in conjunction with HR and ISD. And then overhauling the city's procurement methods and policies, we have an extraordinarily complex and very detailed procurement policy, and it does slow down the rate at which we can do business. I think the finance and admin services folks have done a yeoman's job trying to deal with that, but at the same time, we know that we still have to continue tweaking the policy as it exists. The OPEB reduction strategy is something, again, that will hopefully take place this coming year.
Can I just back up? You said if a department had, is able to show savings from his allocated budget, part of that he kicks back to-
General fund, fund balance.
But first of all, what is that split gonna be? And when it says the part he keeps can be applied to his or her priorities, are those budgeted? Are they on the budget, are they off the budget, are they special projects?
Great question, absolutely.
Are they disbursement bonuses to the managers?
No, these would have to be projects or programs that would have to come back to council for appropriation if they are over a certain size, and I forget what our, it's a $50,000, anything over $50,000 would have to come back to you for in a separate appropriation to be incorporated into any given year's budget. So if the Department of Community Services needed to replace its mobile recreation van, and there's no money in the budget for that, but through their good work, they've been able to peel off $5,000 this year or $10,000 that year because they're doing good work and saving that money, after a certain amount of time, they may have accumulated that savings, they would come back to the city council, say, "Council, allow us to please buy this mobile recreation van."
And can that, can that savings be carried over one year to the next?
It can be carried over, but the concept that we're working with is not to allow for the creation of a war chest, someone's gonna keep $800, $900,000, that's not what the point of this is, and if expenditure control budgeting is done poorly, that's exactly what happens, especially if departments have high vacancy rates, so there's lots of salary savings, they're generating savings for the department without actually innovating at all, they're just, you know, lighting the lights and keeping the money. So we are looking at M&amp;O savings, and the negotiation, or not the negotiation, the split, you know, 80% to the general fund, fund balance, 20% stays to the department, is something that you see, but really that can be ratcheted up or down depending on what the council wants to see.
To create a fund-
Oh, totally.
...that grows and is sort of off the radar from the city manager's office.
In my experience doing this before, with no, I'm sure none of our public safety departments would ever do this, but sometimes because there are a number of vacancies in public safety departments, they generate very significant salary savings. Well, then there's, again, there's a war chest of several hundred thousand dollars that go to buy, sometimes, oftentimes, if it's not managed well, to buy, you know, what amounts to toys, you know, pieces of equipment that may be high-cost, high-profile, but that you never use. That's not what this is all about, this is about finding ways to have those departments that are innovating, that are saving money, and that maybe want to experiment with a program or a project or a piece of equipment, well, it makes them effectively put their money where their mouth is, to say, "Okay, if this is important to us, let's find ways to save money, and we can go forward with this project." When it's done well, it's done very, very well.
Thank you.
Then, so fund summary, Bob, if you don't mind, for these, I'll just run through real quick. So city attorney, fund summary for one fund. City attorney now has liability fund in it, so you see salaries and M&amp;O, and you see, and this is the liability fund component. Again, the type of business it is, very high in terms of management because you have a bunch of attorneys running around, then you have-
Or sitting and studying.
Yeah, if you walk over, sometimes it's like Home Alone when Mike's not there. No, I'm just kidding. So you have, their KPIs in terms of going through, again, what we have for the actual, what the year-end projected is, some ups and some downs really as a reflection of the types of claims that we get in. In terms of their goals for the coming year, 84% completion is what we're projecting. The implementation of training programs, city officials, that's been complete, some of you are taking these classes through the attorney's office now. Other things that are in progress is developing an annual report for the city attorney's office that we can put out to the community, that's being done now. Then this notion of swifter compliance with municipal code, quality of life issues, generally speaking to our admin fine program and the way that that's implemented and marketed, we hope and expect that'll be pretty near completion by the end of this fiscal year. Looking to the future, however, we talk about working with ISD to put together a paper that would understand all of the issues and nuance related to electronic records, especially as it deals with mobile devices, and what is a city record, what is not a city record, and how do we deal with that as we share that cost with our employees. Updating the municipal code, looking at the new documents, project management system to improve customer service to client departments, which is something that, if you think about it, it's our own in-house law firm, Mike and his folks want to make sure they're providing the best level of service and understanding what the volume of work is for he and his attorneys, that helps manage that workload. Yes, sir?
I would like to propose an amendment to the key performance indicators, where we talk about number of lawsuits received, number of lawsuits closed, this, you know, this sort of puts a slip and fall on the same level as a $10 million employment, wrongful employment case, wrongful termination, or et cetera. So let's, and I'm very pleased with the way that we've dealt, that your staff has dealt with a lot of the more high-profile cases. So at some time in the future, if you could put a separate box for, you know, the high-profile or significant exposure cases, and how we've done on those, because I think we've done, it's not fair just to dump it into a, you know, received lawsuit and judge it against whether it was closed or not, so.
Certainly, we can try to parse those out, and then we also, if you look on their, I think number 16 on their KPI is the cost for, average cost for settlement and average cost for lawsuit tried, but I hear what you're saying in terms of not all lawsuits are created equal. So we also, one of the things we'll be looking forward to is working with finance to do a charter amendment. Once again, very complex rules, all layered on top of a very Byzantine charter, and looking in this case at contract and purchasing, something that the attorney's office will tackle this coming year. In terms of funds, you see that they do have the liability insurance fund, that's reflected there, and then by way of a fund recap, Bob, you can do these ones if you don't mind.
Certainly.
Man some water or something, your throat is even-
I can feel it now, is there a doctor in the house?
Just to recap, for city attorney's office, again, they have a general fund component for $3.2 million, the lion's share was in our liability insurance fund with an appropriation of $7.6 million. You can see where we are relative in terms of our fund balance, our beginning fund balance is back up to $7.8 million, with the expenditures proposed for this year, we're still at $6.8 million. So again, this fund was the one that had a approximately $10 million deficit fund balance, but we are forecasting the end of '14, '15 at about $7 million.
When you look at city- When you look at city clerk and city treasurer, two elected offices, we do track KPI for them, but the goals are unto those two elected officials themselves as they lead their respective offices. You can see, once again, how the department looks on paper, you can see their KPI. Lot of work that gets done by a very small number of people in each of these two departments. We do get tremendous value. Minor adjustments in both Artie and Roffey's budgets this coming year, I think, this goes down just a little bit, and Roffey's goes up, but it's not because Roffey's taking it from Artie.
Why does the clerk foresee a slowdown in our number of agenda items for the?
For which period? For the quarter?
I see, no, I see two thousand twelve to thirteen, there were six hundred and five agenda items, and the following actual, two thousand thirteen, fourteen, it was down by about thirty percent.
I mean, Councilmember Najarian, there's a number of reasons for that. In two thousand and thirteen, obviously, we have an election season, so.
What do you forecast for the coming?
For the election, I, I.
More agenda items or less?
I will not even, oh, for the agenda. I thought you were asking a forecast for the elections. I was not even an event. I was not even an event. I guess, you know, for, we do have a, we have less meetings in the last few years. That's part of the reason why we have less items than in previous years, and we probably will continue.
I would also offer that you're seeing the, the investment window is starting to close, and so fewer items.
Does the city clerk feel he's overstaffed with his department?
Absolutely not. Quite the contrary.
Would tend to agree.
I was asking, there are no golden, there are no golden, excuse me, no sacred cows during these budget sessions.
So again, a slight reduction in budget. City treasurer, you can see again here, very similar, smaller department, smaller operation, even fewer employees, tremendous value for us. The KPI kind of speak for themselves, and you can see the, the projection for the rate of return inches up ever, ever, ever so slightly as we claw our way out of the great recession. Mild increase really drawing back to the cost of doing business, medical and retirement. Community development, very active external department, kind of the eye of the storm on any number of projects and programs as they help define what Glendale will look like into the future. Very large and varied department, forty-three million dollars, including twenty-eight million dollars in the Section Eight voucher program, but still very streamlined when you consider the degree of professional staff. You can see that tooth-to-tail ratio still holds, that a lot of folks are working the counter, a lot of folks are out in the field inspecting, and a lot of folks are processing customers that are coming through the housing program.
Tooth-to-tail?
Tooth-to-tail.
Who is it, who are the teeth? Who is the tail?
That's, some days it changes, I'll tell you. The bear gets you, and you get the bear.
Management, the tooth?
No, the management would be the tail, and the teeth are the folks that are out there doing the work.
Okay.
As we like to say, where the meat meets the metal. So you look at their KPI, they are actually doing a tremendous amount of work still, but you're seeing a leveling off in, in some of the indicators in terms of requests for service received and the inspections that are ongoing.
Let me ask, can I ask a question? I see that you have, there's a drop of, well, it's less than a thousand, but for the code enforcement inspections completed, is that because we think that we require less of them, or we just don't have the money to do them? Because, you know, this is something, we get frequent complaints and emails, and this can be a real quality of life issues, issue for people.
My, our sense is that we're getting fewer requests, and ours guess is that it's because construction in the neighborhoods, construction activity has been a lot lower because of the economy, and we're seeing slowly an uptick as people are starting to do things.
Does this include code enforcement for non-building-related items, or is this only for building-related?
It's, it's all of it. But, but before, when we had a lot of calls, we would get a lot of calls on suspicion of illegal construction. That has really dropped significantly.
I know we have, that's great that we have less of that, although you never know when that's gonna pick up again.
Right.
And I know we have a lot less employees, but it would be great if we can be proactive as we have been in the past about just quality of life things that people may not report, you know, the couches on the street, the yard sale signs that stay up for months, those small things that kind of add up to people's sense of a neighborhood. Also, some of our lower-income housing and making sure that they're up to code and that people are not living in substandard living conditions, even without complaint, that our code enforcement officers should take it upon themselves to make sure that we, that our vulnerable citizens aren't put at risk.
And they do, and a lot happens out in the field through just asking the people to comply without reporting, and people are, have been very good at that.
Okay, good. I just wanted, when I saw this drop, I just wanted to be sure it wasn't that we needed to do more, but we couldn't afford it, because that's something where.
At this point, I would say that this is really, we, we don't know if the economy picks up, how much the demand will go up, but.
Okay, so this is demand-based, really?
This is demand-based.
Okay, terrific. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Correlational, but not necessarily causational. But you do see that, that parallel. In terms of building inspections or building permits issued, you know, there is some continuity there, but again, these are coming largely in commercial areas, commercial projects, people trying to get their projects in as that window is closing. The one that, that really we can be proud of is the average turnaround time for building plan check. This has been a goal of the department, where we were at twenty-two days is the average. We are projecting to be at nineteen days, and time is money for a lot of folks who are doing projects, and so we are definitely creating that value. When we talk about goals for this coming year, eighty-three percent completion is what we're projecting. That includes the stretch goals that you see italicized there. But in terms of leveraging the area command structure with, with our code enforcement program, so that the, the area commanders and the lead officers are very much aware of the types of things our code enforcement officers look for, and vice versa, to the extent we can identify those broken windows, we've been able to establish that protocol between these two departments, and that's something that's already yielding benefit with Chief Castro and, and Mr. Agani working together and their respective staffs. To the extent that additional eyes and ears, those officers are out there patrolling twenty-four seven, they know generally what it is to look for, and they can report that back into us. The outreach with the permit streamlining, we've implemented this, this, this earlier spring. We, as you know, we, we did a very limited streamlining to make sure that we didn't upset the apple cart because folks were very fearful of change, and so we're prog, we're progressing slowly through the CDD department. Next steps, we'll be working through fire, public works, GWP, city attorney's office to continue this first wave of, of streamlining. If we are successful, if we can demonstrate that we can make more decisions at the lowest possible level, then we can take on additional streamlining as the council sees fit. The council did approve new technology to be purchased by the department to be used in terms of tracking customer experience and helping customers move through the permit center more efficiently and more understandably, and we are still working through the implementation of that. We're hopeful right about the end of the fiscal year that it will be completely installed, but it may drag over through the rest of the summer. We are hopeful if we can work through the, you'll see on ISD, get through a number of investments that ISD has to do, that online permitting will be merely a matter of money and investing in the system that most, that folks can then do their permit processing entirely online, which hopefully makes it that much more convenient to them. You see that the draft Glendale plan was a stretch goal to get the, that, the, complete a first draft. That's in process, and you'll see down below, that goes from a stretch goal to actually being one of their strategic goals this year. The historic survey for commercial properties is something that had taken a backseat due to funding. We have realized the funding for that now, and you'll see that that has migrated into being an actual strategic goal, not just a stretch goal for the coming year. So to that end, we have a new work program for Building and Safety Division. We have overhired on an hourly basis a number of inspectors, trade inspectors, to be able to handle the increased demand for inspection, but again, they're hourly, and so the idea is that as the curve draws down, if we have attrition where folks are retiring, we can keep some of those inspectors. If not, then they're hourly, and then we can transition them out of the organization.
I know, sorry.
Sorry?
It's hard to get, it's hard to know when to jump in, Scott.
No, no.
Because you talk so fast.
I'm sorry.
It's great. No, I like it. I like it, but I don't know how you breathe. We went very quickly about, over the complete historic survey, that will begin soon. I just want to put a little highlight on that one because it's something that we've talked about for a long time, that we've wanted to do, something that's gonna be a great benefit in terms of preserving our historic structures. Now is not the time, but at some point, let's maybe do a little presentation to council and public to show how that's gonna work, what that means, what it means for buildings, for projects, all of that. You know, not now, but at some point, let's do a nice, let's, let's talk to the public about what this means.
You know what we can do, similar to what we did for Rockhaven, where we really walked out the RFQ/RFP process for the selection of an idea? We can have Mr. Platt come back and do that for you on this selection, so you see the full gamut of what it's gonna be. That'd be wonderful. Okay, we can do that certainly.
So, I have a question. And I asked about this last year also, this, the whole concept of percentage completed, strategic goals, it's sort of a more amorphous and vague concept because it's, I understand it's hard to measure in a tangible way, things that may not necessarily be tangible. But as I look at these completion rates, they're all below a hundred percent, so.
Except for two departments, I think.
Except for two departments. So there are actually a couple of departments that are a hundred?
Yes.
And which ones are they?
I believe ISD and there's one more, I can't recall. I think, I think GWP as a matter of fact.
Okay. So those that don't, don't come in at a hundred percent, do we have some kind of remedial measure, or do we learn lessons, or what is it that we do?
No, I, that's a good question. For, for those folks who, in this case, CDD, they're at eighty-three, when you look at those items that are in process right now, my expectation, your, and yours certainly can be, that they will be completed shortly thereafter. This is just by June thirtieth, when the curtain comes down, are they one hundred percent complete or not?
Oh, I see.
So those things will be complete within a, a period of time, but they aren't in terms of how we keep score. So to the extent that we look at the department and try to understand, do they have the appropriate staffing? Well, if, if they're gonna be short-staffed, you're probably gonna see it on whether or not they're able to, to get their, their numbers.
Okay.
But also, based on a question you had asked last year, and we've actually reformatted some of these goals, because some of them were kind of squishy in terms of how do you know when you're, when you're done? So if you look at, a lot of these, almost all of them at this point are almost a pass/fail. You know, did we do it? Did we not do it? And so there is an actual, either a document or a program, or, you know, there's a white paper, there's a study. Some action has resulted from, from these goals based on that observation.
Okay, thank you.
You'll see here on, on the goals, a lot of stuff for the coming year, but some of it is, is holdover, as we had just mentioned. So the South Glendale Community Plan, I already talked about the, the Building Division, the Business Registration Certificate and Licensing Processes, that will be rolling out and evaluated in the first wave as we move through the summer and into the fall. The RFQ/RFP process, should it move to RFP for Rockhaven, getting to that next milestone is one of their goals. The Historic Commercial Property Survey is mentioned by Councilwoman Friedman. The visioning exercise for the Council and Housing Authority on Fifth and Sonora, getting that done, actually competing, completing construction of the Veterans Village, and then moving mobility planning organizationally into CDD where it probably has the best marriage of our planning for sustainability and quality neighborhoods. The stretch goals, these are as much as anything funding-related, but the idea is to, to implement mobile devices and a protocol for our field inspectors, our code compliance inspectors. We're having great success with this, with the fire department using iPads. We'd like to be able to migrate that over into code compliance and hopefully increase the, the velocity with which we're achieving compliance, because we're not having paperwork filed back and forth and just move it all entirely paperless. As I mentioned earlier, the interface technology upgrade for the Permit Services Center, this will be, it's, like I said, it's a money issue as much as anything else. I believe last estimate was several hundred thousand dollars. You'll see as we accumulate fees for service that we may be able to start to save the money to make this kind of investment, hopefully in the coming fiscal year, probably by the end of the coming fiscal year or the year following. Lastly, we, things like a cash box system, we need to, to get that for the, the collection of money. The way we do it right now probably isn't the best. It's been something that the internal audit has focused on that we are working on improving. We have the fund summaries here, again, lots of different funds. The CDBG fund is here, Housing Assistance Fund, Home Grant, and the CDBG for Code Enforcement, and then you have our, our various home programs and Lomond Housing. So you can see, we do spend a considerable amount of money in our housing programs, and we, while we're recognizing a reduction here in CDBG, mild increases in other parts of the department. In terms of the overall departmental summary, you see total appropriations along the bottom and the ending fund balances respective to those funds that you see across the top here. Parks and Community Services, you, you see the idea or the profile of the department, a tremendous amount of hourly workers that reflects our seasonal workers, our recreation folks, a lot of non-management folks that are there working out at the park sites, so it is a very, very streamlined department. Significant capital outlay and capital improvement because of the, the restoration and rehabilitation of our parks. The KPI for what you see for the, the year-end and the projected year-end, again, a, a good deal of stability, but we're also looking here in these areas, some reduction in contract classes and recreational classes, trying to understand, are we, are we not getting, why are we not getting the same numbers as we had previously last year? Conversely, good revenue permits for our facilities, and that is helping them meet their goals of increasing rental income. For the current year, to the extent that we have the Parks Maintenance Paper, the, the paper has been drafted, and understanding, the idea here is to understand where is the best location for Parks Maintenance, what should it look like going into the future? That's just a matter of, of business. The notion of moving the WIB from Community Services and Parks over to the Economic Development Department as it's now being created, that paper is, I believe, finalized, and it'll be coming to the council shortly for your perusal as well. And the idea behind that is that the CSP, Department of Community Services and Parks, has really become something of a human services department as well as Parks and Recreation. However, to the extent that the WIB as a facility and as an operation can lend more to economic development as we move forward within a post-redevelopment world, you know, we have to understand where is the best location for the Verdugo Job Center and WIB. We are in the process, and Oning is working very, very hard to increase the rental income. I hope and expect he will get very close to that five percent goal as we close out this year. And I know that the folks in, in both, in the CSP department as well as Innovation Team Number Three, working on this concept of utilizing school sites as parks and open space, so we partner with GUSD to put recreation opportunities there on, on school sites, is coming to a close. They have some very solid recommendations, but once again, the issue will be funding. Is there funding to operate those sites? We look to the next year, the, the web portal, something that was very near and dear to the council's heart, finding a way to help folks who want to either volunteer, or if we change, reformat the idea of a volunteer coordinator to not just, you know, dealing in ones and twos, but utilizing entire groups of people, service clubs, nonprofits, connecting them with needs in the community, so working with the management services folks to be able to put together that web portal. That will happen, I'm hopeful, in this fall or by this fall. Utilizing water-wise landscaping in all of our parks with the actual hard goal of reducing water consumption by ten percent, thus dropping the cost to the department and allowing that money to be freed up for programming like the GIT three program. When we look at the partnerships between the WIB and educational institutions, actually finding, having two joint grant funding applications that tie back to post-secondary education for skills development for those folks who are in their late teens, early twenties, or displaced workers. When you look at the master plan, something that the council has talked about considerably, master planning Fremont and Central Parks will be a goal for this department going forward, and then maybe a more modest rental income increase down to three percent. Again, I think we're pushing capacity today, and we probably won't be able to get to five percent next year if we hit these numbers here. I think we're getting the maximum amount that we can out of the staff that we have.
At some point, maybe now's not, not the best time, because I know we've got a bunch of stuff to go through. I'd like to understand a little bit more about the WIB and how it's funded and what the city's obligation is in that and.
Yes, sir. And, and actually, the, the bringing back the white paper would be a very good vehicle for, to, to have that discussion, so we will bring that back. Lastly, as a stretch goal, as much as time as well as money is the Development of Urban Parks Strategic Plan. I think that could be a lot of fun for the entire community, certainly for the council. It's just gonna be a, a function of capacity in terms of making it into the, the work program for the department.
Skip the GUSD. You just read, because people can't see that.
I'm sorry. Expand after-school structured recreation programming. Expand after-school structured recreation programming, and implement after-school recreation program. This is the GIT III program. We have, I gotta say, I gotta give it up to both the, 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 the GIT program is different topics that come up, singular kinds of topics. We're looking to innovate, so we bring somebody from all the different departments, give them a problem, have them focus on that problem, and come up with a recommendation. This particular project was this notion of utilizing, increasing recreation opportunities in built-out neighborhoods. The idea then manifests as, well, let's use school sites. In the past, the, the, the school district has not been as willing, I think, to allow programming on their sites. I have to give it up to the district, though, and to the GIT team. The district has come through with a, a full agreement to allow us onto a handful of, of sites as a pilot program. So I think we would be at Horace Mann, at the Middle School Marshall, and, and another one, I just, it escapes me off the top of my head, areas where we do need park space, and the idea that after school, the kids are already there, we can make use of, and make it very convenient for the parents, if their kids, who as soon as they get out of school, can transition into an organized sports program, that's effectively subsidized by the city in order to get maximum participation. And further, from the GIT group, once we have, once we have their kids, we can then use the opportunity, as those parents are coming for regular games and, and events, to educate them on everything, from grid modernization and GWP, to water-wise tips, to upcoming elections and voter registration, the full gamut of all of our services. It'll, it'll still come, the reason why it's a stretch goal is because it comes down to funding.
A lot of exciting projects over the next year or two in this department.
Very much so. Very much so. You, you see, I won't bore you with the fund summary, you, you have the, the handouts, and you've already covered this information with Bob just a few moments ago. And you see what the overall department budget looks like, when you, when you count all of the, the funds that go into CSP. And you can see a little bit of, of a drop-off because of the projects that were completed in this current year versus the projects going forward. The fund recap, similar to what Bob had mentioned just a second ago. And let's, let's jump over to the fire department, then. Again, there is, the, the meat of the, of the department there is there in the non-management ranks, delivering service in the field. So 77% of the department is there, on the apparatus floor, and the, and the, the person of, or the people of firefighter, paramedics, engineers, and captains. It's very limited. I have to say, we are extraordinarily limited and streamlined when it comes to battalion chiefs and executive oversight. I have passed on to the City Council an article that was regarding an effort in the San Gabriel Valley to consolidate on some, to some degree, three different separate fire departments. And to the extent that a smaller geographic area with a lower call volume has considerably more management oversight by way of the battalion chiefs or division chiefs, speaks volumes to, to the, the fire department leadership, but also is, as a function of organizational development, suggests that we need to be looking at whether or not we need to find different ways to organize the work that's being done by the fire department. You know, dividing the city into east and west, or north and south, but to establish two different districts for general day-to-day oversight is a, a management puzzle that the chief is looking at, is going to have to solve going forward. You can see a whole lot of, of work. I'm, I am, I'm curious as to whether or not we actually will end up at 16,557 calls. You see, last year, we had a new high at 17,000. We, i-if this number drops off, if, if this number holds current with the first three quarters, then we will actually have a new high. I think we're maybe, we're hoping that, that the number, as we see it's projected here for the fourth quarter, starts to, to fall away as, as we get into the summer months. We'll see. But I think the point is, even at 16,557 calls, that's still more than where we were several years ago. And a lot of that predominantly, as you know, is EMS calls. And the EMS calls that we're getting are generally related to our elderly, and the types of ailments that impact them are, are, are very specific. So we're spending effectively, you know, for 30% of the population, 70% of our department, or of their call volume is being, is being focused there. So you've got that kind of Pareto Principle taking effect, something that we have to watch, but certainly, an exciting time in the fire service, if nothing else, because of the Affordable Care Act, is forcing hospitals to do business differently, which is forcing us to do business differently. You can see that we have a good degree of consistency in terms of the average call times, both for EMS and fire. We do still have quite a bit of, of overtime usage. A good chunk of that relates to the vacancies that we have, so there'll be, there will be salary savings to offset it, as well as IODs. When you look at the goals for this current year, the extended IOD cases, looking at ways to, to limit that, the chief is innovating with what we like to call fluorescent light therapy, the idea of bringing folks back on light duty, so that at least we get the full value of their experience, even if they're injured, they can't be on the apparatus floor, they can be in the office, helping with any number of, of duties that, that exist, that are administrative in nature. The future of EMS and healthcare reform is complete, we will be bringing that to the council, because it is an interesting prism into what the future may hold with respect to who, the people that we, that we transport to the hospital, what happens to them, and how they cycle through the system. Again, we are as much an EMS department as we are a fire department, with EMS being about 85% of the call load, and so we have to understand where that, that trend is going. Plan check assessment and recommendations, we have a new fire marshal, we are finalizing kind of the, the, the first 180 days in that department, to make sure that there is consistency between what happens in CDD, and what happens in fire department, that they're definitely on the same page. The chief has completed this overtime tracking and metric, so as we look at overtime costs for the fire department, we know precisely what is driving it. What element is MOU-driven? What element is IOD-driven? What element is vacancy-driven? And understanding then, how do we best diagnose, one, we diagnose the problem, and two, what do we do about it? The Fire Academy is implemented, we're underway, we'll have a new crop of firefighters into the system very, very shortly. Customer Service Project, it's kind of difficult for a department, especially a department with a 90% satisfaction rating, to have a customer service project, because you want to believe that everyone loves you anyway. And how do you check customer service, you know, especially on EMS call, or some kind of trauma? You know, you hand them a customer service card as they're, you know, bleeding out of their eyeballs. The idea here is to find a way through social media to contact people at the appropriate time, after we've given them service, to understand what we did well, and what we could do better. And I think the idea here is for the department to definitely demonstrate that level of empathy that's important to all of our departments. Going forward for the next year, the department facilities, the repair, the chief had already indicated this, that is a, a, a major element for us, something that we've neglected for far too long. Very interesting, the department's at the cutting edge of our Employee Performance and Evaluation Program. As you know, right now, our evaluations are rather intensive, and not that we don't want to get the, the maximum amount of insight and evaluation of our employees out of those instruments, but the problem that we have is oftentimes, because it's so lengthy and so cumbersome, we see folks just kind of going through the motions, and not really delving into really good and insightful and useful performance management. So to the extent that the department is streamlining, or is intending to streamline, that, that evaluation instrument could be a harbinger for all of our other departments as well, and lead us towards a, a kind of an internal evolution in our, in our merit system. The Illness and Injury Prevention Program, the IIPP, is something that has not been updated for many years, needs to be updated, and moves in conjunction with the Reduction in Workers' Comp injuries. Full staffing, it doesn't sound like a lot, but I have to tell you, to the extent that we are not full-staffed in the department, that drives our overtime costs. So to the extent that we get to full staffing, and we maintain that staffing, is important to the business of the department. EMS response times in impacted districts. Our downtown, west side, and south Glendale areas are impacted today, and they are impacted again, when you look at who is calling 911, and what are they ailing from, and the demographic. And we need to make sure that we have the resources available, but we don't over-spect what those resources are. The, the idea of having a 12-hour car in the downtown district during the period of 8:00 to 8:00, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, could be very cost-effective. And based on the ALS/BLS program that we have right now, that we've, that we have innovated with, we are getting a great deal of cost-effectiveness from this department. But I think we can innovate still, just a little bit further, as we drill into what those numbers are in the impacted districts.
Can we look, I mean, I, I, we've gotten the explanation in the past about why the engine has to go with the EMS crew, but in the downtown, when you have such short distances, and you have so many medical calls, is this something we can reevaluate? Sort of yes or no? I mean...
Not, not especially, because the, the same holds true. And when we talk about the downtown district, I'm not talking necessarily about Bran Boulevard, I'm talking about the neighbors on the wing.
Yeah, the residential areas.
I, I, so I don't, I'll defer to the chief, but I don't know if we have, if that protocol would work in the field.
I mean, is there any way of innovating, so that when you know you're going on these medical calls, you don't have to send the engine?
Good morning, Councilwoman Friedman. It's not necessarily the vehicles, it's the people that we need. The vehicles, the engine carries the four personnel, and the ambulance carries the two. It's the hands, it's the bodies. For one EMS call, that's a heart-related call, which is our number-one call in the Glendale Fire Department, heart and chest pain type calls. Having six people on scene, sometimes it's not enough. So the vehicles carry the people, and all the equipment that they need to actually do the job. The complement's the same, the two paramedics and the four EMTs on an EMS call, that's really what the need is. If you go to an emergency room, and you actually see someone being treated in a controlled environment, in an emergency room, they have well more than six people handling a patient with chest pain calls.
And is there any way to triage through the 911 calls, to see when, you know, if it's someone who says, "I think I sprained my ankle," as opposed to, "I'm having trouble breathing"? Is there a way to do that kind of triage? So maybe you can...
We, we, we do that today. We, we do the triaging today through dispatch, and we have different type codes for different types of calls. But even a sprained ankle sounds like a non-serious call, but just moving that patient to the ambulance is important to have enough people to do that, so they don't, we don't re-injure them, or, or make the pain greater just by transporting them. Now, once a patient's in the ambulance, they can go their separate ways. The ambulance can go to the care facility, and the engine can go back available. But just having enough people is a critical point in the whole problem. Some calls, we actually call additional personnel, if they're up three flights of stairs, it's tight, or they're a large person, and we have to navigate around a lot of corners. We actually call more people.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, while, while you're there, you know, we, we often hear this, three versus four people on an engine issue. I'm, I'm assuming this is correlated to what you were talking about, having enough bodies there, enough professionals there, so would you talk about that a little bit?
Absolutely. Four, four is the model, there's been a lot of studies done, whether it's an EMS call or a fire call, four is, four is the preferred model. And there's NIST studies that are, that are out there, and I presented them a few years ago, whether it's an EMS call. And, and when you break down the positions and what their responsibilities are, the three versus the four on an EMS, I'll give you that one first. You have a, you have a supervisor, which is the fire captain. That person's job is to coordinate with the family, make sure the environment's safe, make sure they're accounting for all their people, and, and really be in that scene manager. The engineer is the individual who drives the fire engines or the ladder truck. Their job is basically equipment moving. They got to bring in the bags, the medical equipment, get the gurneys, navigate the, get the rigs ready to, to depart, and, and help if needed. Then you have the two paramedics. Their primary job is patient assessment. One is assessing the patient, really going over what's wrong with them, doing that critical set of vitals. The other paramedic is in touch with the hospital, letting them know what they have going on scene, so the hospital can give us that feedback that we need to give that good patient care. And our last two EMTs, they're taking the vitals, they're stabilizing the patient, they're moving the patient, they're following the directions of the paramedics. One less body changes that whole environment, and makes it a lot more difficult. And the same thing with fire calls, we have a two-in, two-out, an OSHA standard. And what that says is, if we have an active fire on scene, and we don't know if there's someone in there or not, we actually can't go inside and fight that fire unless we have two-out to affect the rescue, in case one of our firefighter goes down. But the same complement, we have a supervisor, we have an engineer who's pumping the rig, then we have two firefighters ready to go to work. Our stations are really placed well in Glendale, so a lot of times, we have one engine on scene in a rapid, in a, in a rapid response, maybe a few more minutes before that second engine gets there. And for that first-in engine to have the ability to go in, attack the fire, give direction to the incoming units, and not have to worry about, if something goes wrong, who's going to come and get me? Because that's one of the things that's on our minds all the time also, and we think about that on a regular basis. It's a big deal to have four, it's a preferred method. The amount of work goes up in any given time with four versus three.
So it wouldn't be fair to say that four is the industry standard?
Four is the industry standard. Many departments here, in the, 31 fire departments here in LA, in LA County, Los Angeles Fire Department staffs with four, Long Beach Fire Department staffs with four, Glendale staffs with four. Just by naming those few departments right there, that's most of the fire stations in LA County. Half of LA County's fire stations are staffed with four, if, because LA County contracts out, if a local community chooses to staff the engine with four, that local community will have four, even with the Los Angeles County Fire Department. So most of the stations are staffed with four here in LA County.
And I can tell you that in, moving with three slows down the, the, the ability to, to attack, whatever the issue might be, because oftentimes, because of the two-in-two-out, you're waiting for somebody else to arrive. Having done that one before, it does make, if you can afford it, it makes a tremendous amount of sense to go with the two, the four people.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, just one last thing on this, very exciting, this notion of community paramedic program, chief innovating with our local area hospitals, we hopefully are going to be funded through foundation and grant funding. What this program basically is, again, an outcropping of the ACA, that would feature two paramedics hired back to, to provide in-home follow-up care with folks who are recently released. The idea being that if they are checking their vitals, they're taking their medication, following doctor's orders, they're less likely to circle back into the emergency rooms, thus penalizing the, the hospitals under ACA. So it's, it's more cost-effective for them to partner with us to put service out in the field, versus risk having to pay for the fine for the, the folks that, that cycle through their ERs. At the same time, also focusing on where do we deliver these patients to, perhaps to urgent care versus the emergency rooms? And you're seeing now, our local area hospitals partnering up or investing in urgent care facilities, again, to, to bring health care out into the community, now that folks have the means of, a lot of folks have the means to, to pay for it, vis-à-vis their insurance. So a very, very interesting time. Bob, you want to go through these ones real quick?
I know that you're rushing, but I did see SERT on there, and I'm glad to see that. I, I just want to ask, or, or give a comment, that last, earlier this year, I had talked about do, doing first aid training in the schools, and I just want to be sure we do check with Glendale USD, and to see whether it's something they'd be interested in. We've had around the country, unfortunately, horrible disasters in our schools, and we're in an earthquake and disaster-prone area, and really, first responders, they're really not the fire department, they're the person standing next to you sometimes. And if we can get kids trained in basic emergency first aid, how to apply a tourniquet, whatever it is, I think that our schools will be that much safer. So I hope it's something that GUSD is interested in doing, and I, I hope that either a fire department or a police department is, can accommodate that.
Yes, ma'am. Bob will run through these very quickly, in terms of the fire department.
To summarize the fire department, obviously, the line shares in the general fund, I spoke of the, some of the variances before, in terms of the increase with the new firefighters, increase in workers' comp and PERS rates. Again, down in the CIP fund is Station 29. EMS was a slight reduction in some of our hourly wages. And then lastly, the Verdugo Fund with the slight reduction in capital outlay. Grand total of $56,189,000 in terms of a proposed budget for 1415. Again, fund recaps with general fund and all the other ancillary funds. I think the only thing to really point out is, within the EMS fund, with the appropriation totals, there is still a, a little bit of a deficit fund balance, but we are making headway in terms of where we will end up, 1415.
Glendale Water and Power, an interesting year for GWP, certainly. I think we have turned a, a corner, such as it is, and moved away from a, a crisis mode type of, of mentality, and, and more into stability and looking to the future. You see how they're laid out, certainly the reflection of the bond proceeds that are there, that are actually being invested in to, to Glendale neighborhoods and infrastructure. And you see the size of the department, and how it's, how it, it looks on paper. Again, very streamlined, although reduced in size overall. We are here working on a number of the, the issues that, that are reflected by the, the investments that, that we are making now on infrastructure, whereas we had, for example, nine water main breaks last year, we're projecting at this point that we would have 18. The idea there, though, is that the cavalry is coming over the hill with the investments that we're making. In this case, for example, the project in Adams Hill weighs most heavy, because that's one area where we had a number of problems. We're still actually pumping about the same amount of money and importing it from MWD... We're still actually pumping about the same amount of money and, and importing it from MWD. That drives costs, certainly. But there are lots of things that are happening in GWP that speak to the future of, of this particular department. And you can see it in their goals for this current year. At 100% completion, they did, they were spread out in different places around the city. We've consolidated them back on campus and achieved a high degree of focus from them. We did develop, just this week came out the published Utility Modernization Milestones, something that helps explain what the benefit of grid modernization was to the community, especially the fact that it was leveraged through, through the federal government. The rate restructure on the electric side was completed and the capital improvement plan was done as well. So kudos to the folks in GWP. But as I say, that's, that was getting the house in order. Now we're looking forward, and 1415 is going to be an extraordinary year. The 1940's technology at Grayson Power Plant, it's come time to replace it or get out of the power plant business altogether. We think that we have an opportunity through SCAPPA to actually in, invest in the plant, power it hopefully in a way that will generate revenue from outside of the city in, into our coffers that help offset the, some of the cost and oper, the operation cost for the overall organization. So the first step is to hire the owner's engineer and prepare the design-build process. That will be very exhaustive, very comprehensive, and probably taken in of itself 18 months before we can get to the actual hard construction replacement of Grayson. When we talk about the pilot phase of outage management distribution management system, this is leveraging the, the smart grid investment that we have made as a means of doing more remotely and understanding from an IT standpoint how it to best manage the overall grid. We will close out the final crossing Ts and dotting Is with Energy Modernization Grant and hopefully complete the conversion to the 12KV system. And lastly, but, but most importantly, I think, for all of this is finally, not finally, but, but updating, revising the strategic plan for GWP. In the past, we had outlined a very aggressive capital program and, and let part of that overall plan, vis-à-vis the finances, fall by the wayside. At this point, the idea, especially with the, the leadership of the department, is to understand the full impact of the way that they do business. We're going to invest in infrastructure. We're going to make sure that rates are competitive with the market but are, are suitable for the types of things that the council wants to achieve in this arena. You see here in terms of the fund summary, again, the reflection of the money that has been generated through bond proceeds. And you'll see over the coming couple of years that that investment is being made in our neighborhoods and in our infrastructure. Yes, sir?
Since today, the United States Supreme Court refused to hear the appeal from the county of Los Angeles on toxic chemicals going into the harbor from the LA River, saying that the county will pass it on to the 88 cities to fix. That could be a big cost in, in the future, not this year. But I'd be willing to bet within a year or two that we're gonna be saddled with enormous cost to eliminate all pollutants into the, from the Verdugo wash in our side drains into the river. How you're gonna monitor it and what you're gonna construct to make it happen, that's gonna be an enormous cost.
It most definitely will.
And I don't know when it'll hit. It's probably gonna be some more internal fighting because the District Appeals Court hasn't dealt it out, the punishment yet. But that article, it, it's gonna mean not this year or the next year, but we better start thinking about it and be aware of its coming.
Third-party lawsuits are, are, are driving a lot of the movement, which is, which is unfortunate. You know, and because the environmental groups want to get to an absolute zero about what goes into the ocean. Unfortunately, the water that comes out of the canyons isn't at zero pollutants. And so I think there's going to have to be some compromise in terms of, you know, what is practical, especially at a cost-effective basis. But as I say, it's unfortunate that, that the third-party lawsuits are driving the discussion. I think at this point, based on that decision, the county of LA will have to step in, as well as the other, the 88 cities, to exert leadership of their own and say, "Okay, this is a fact of life. We are going, there is a policy, a goal of, of keeping the, the rivers and waterways and ocean as clean as possible. What do we have to do to get there?" And that will be expensive. And, and the county tried to wrestle with it last year and ultimately couldn't come to grips with it. There will be a cost. I do think that there is an opportunity, sir, through GWP Water, at least for, in Glendale's little corner of the world, to focus on water recharge as a means of, of achieving some of these goals.
Yeah, but you're not gonna solve the pollution from cars running on our streets.
Brake pads and, and, and the...
We've done the trash.
That's right.
You know, we put up the guards on the storm drains, but now they're going to the other items, the, the different pollutants. And I don't know how you're gonna control that. You're gonna have to control them.
The bacteria TMBL.
Into the LA River. You're gonna have to capture it, identify it and treat it at some enormous cost.
It is.
I just don't wanna see Water and Power get to that date when it's here and we haven't researched or done anything.
No, absolutely. We have, actually, it's our public work staff that are responsible for the storm drain program. And that may, as I say, that may end up migrating into GWP because they're better placed to address the water.
It's the liquids now that they're talking about. All these different chemicals, copper from the brakes on cars and stuff. You know, that's a whole new world and that seems like Water and Power.
In terms of HR, kind of a small department, but a department with a tremendous amount of responsibility. People are, are number-one expense and so to the extent that we're cultivating those people, that responsibility falls to HR. You can see how they look on paper. Interesting here, you know, to the extent that we're projecting 80% goal completion, some of these goals, a lot of them are collaborative with other departments. The, the things that I will draw your attention to, the notion of modifying, condensing employee evaluation form, similar using the, the police, or rather, the fire department is that canary in the coal mine. This will be a major push this coming year, probably through another Git program utilizing staff from across the organization and coordinated out of HR. When you look at the Civil Service Commission hearing guidelines, doing that in conjunction with the City Attorney's Office, that will be important, but it'll also be important to look at the overall civil service system that we have embedded in the city charter and try to, to determine whether or not we can reform that system in such a way that it allows the city council, from time to time, to make adjustments to, to our civil service codes.
Is there a separate budget line item for the Civil Service Commission? Or is that just absorbed in the...
It's absorbed, I believe, into the over...
Attorney and...
To the, the staffing within the department and within legal. So going forward, this notion of the procedures for Civil Service Commission hearings, that rises to the fore. That is something that needs to get done. This year, we spend a good deal amount of, of time on hearings. And I do think that the commissioners themselves want to see a, a more streamlined type of program. Courts, especially federal courtrooms, offer a great model in terms of setting what the, the parameters of a hearing will be. And we think that we can look in, in those directions. The policy and procedure for fire personnel and compliance with firefighter bill of rights, the, and, and understanding how that now plays in, how it's integrated into the civil service system, where maybe there's conflict today over who is responsible for what, that needs to get resolved. We've been down this road with the police officer bill of rights. We need to find the right answer and anticipate that we're gonna get there with firefighter bill of rights as well. Internal audit recommendations, as they've been made, those need to be integrated into the overall work plan for HR. And this notion of procedures and controls for hourly employees, there is inherently a temptation as we cut back on, on full-time equivalent employees to put more emphasis into hourly's. And pretty soon, the hourly's start to look and feel a lot like full-time employees, having a very set type of procedure and guideline for departments to, to both regulate themselves and also to be controlled by HR to, to ensure that we keep our costs as low as possible. That will be important for them going forward this year. The, the mandatory employer provisions for ACA, as that, I'm curious if that will continue to change. And, and we thought we were ready for the ACA requirements this year. And then the, the law changed to give everybody more time, so we're kind of, you know, putting one foot in, one foot out, but making sure as best we can to comply with the law. And, and also integrate the law and the intent of the law into the way that we work with our employee population and provide benefits to them is important. I talked about the employee evaluation program being Git 4. That will be something that I think a lot of employees can rally around, especially in the wake of the Employee Engagement Survey, where folks want to make sure that they're being evaluated fairly and regularly and timely. And then finally, the FLSA audit, Fair Labor Standards Audit, making sure that we are in full compliance with, with the dictates of that audit. If we can, as a stretch goal, getting to the notion of new MOUs, successor MOUs with all of our associations. GFFA is still in the current agreement. Everybody else is rolling on one-year agreements. We hope, in the context of this kind of two-year budget, to be able to roll everybody forward into at least one-year agreements. But if there is an opportunity for multi-year agreements, that, that is fair for the employee group, but also within the council's principles of financial management and employee compensation, then we can bring that to you as well. The department, we, as we've divided up the, the workers' comp from the liability, where liability went to the City Attorney's Office. All of our other insurances are here in the HR department. And you see those as they're represented, and Bob had talked about them previously. And then you look at what their, where the department is, both on a fund basis here across the top, as well as what the ending fund balances are. You can see workers' comp, we're still dealing with that nearly $14 million deficit that we will chip away over the next seven years to bring it into, into balance. The other, the funds that we've talked about previously. And then we'll jump to information services. Again, you're seeing the common recurring theme, very streamlined, lots of, of non-management employees to management employees. And you're seeing now, finally, the, thanks to the council's wisdom and, and willingness to, to fund investments and capital improvement, things that should have been done in an organization as progressive as this that were not done are now being brought to the fore by Brian Ganley and his staff. And so you see the, the indicators that we have. This is a department that we get a great deal of service out of, but we have a lot of processes that can indeed be streamlined. And so part of the strategic plan for the ISD department is really to look at those opportunities where we can realize some savings, both in, in the way that we do things, as well as the tools that we use. The 100% completion for this department, certainly Brian hit the ground running and he found a very willing and, and eager department trying to, to put that best foot forward. So we did move forward with the Tier Two RFP, RFQ process. Again, that will be an investment on the front end, a substantial investment, but it will yield significant benefits to us as we move forward. The INET replacement that grew out of the lawsuit with Charter Communications, by the end of this calendar or fiscal year, we should have that complete, where we have our own fiber optic ring. The IT strategic plan has been completed. That will be brought to you if, if, for no other reason, so that you have a very clear understanding about what our liabilities and opportunities are as an overall department. And then the, the reorganization, as Brian came in, made some changes, evaluated those changes, continued to make adjustments, that has been completed as well. So it's been a, a very fruitful year on all levels within DWP, I'm sorry, ISD. When you look at the Tier Two program, again, this is a multifaceted, multi-year effort that'll take place, the Infra, the Perkins Data Center, Infrastructure Incorporating Server Virtualization. I can't underscore enough how important this is to bring us into the modern age of computing for an organization our size. Again, something that we should have done well before and just didn't have the ability, both funding as well as capacity. The permitting system, that is something I know is near and dear to the council's hearts. We will set up the shot for, for us by understanding what systems are available, understanding what tools we can use and where we have the money, yes, ma'am, to, to spend that money, but a lot of it is going to be dependent upon funding.
Where is the budgeting for smart grid? For IT for, for the smart grid? Whether it's security or upgrades, does that go in GWP or does it go into IT?
If it's, if it's GWP-related, it stays with GWP in their budget.
But IT does some of that work?
They do a good portion of it and we contract out a good chunk, too.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure where the funding was. Thank you.
Then the telephone systems, things as rudimentary as telephones, that system will get replaced. It was literally on its last legs for Civic Center and Fire Station Number 21. That will be upgraded this, this current year, or the, the coming fiscal year. You see, again, how they look on paper. You've seen this information from Bob. And you see the overall, the recap of the three funds that make up ISD. Library Arts and Culture, a very exciting year for them as we close out the current fiscal year with a grand opening of Brand Library and Arts Center. And next year, moving forward, the, the project at Central Library, the rehab there really will dominate the landscape of this particular department. You can see a lot of stability within the department in terms of folks who are using the services, but you're also seeing an increase in some of the programs that we offer that are very, very popular. We hope and expect that with, with the opening of Brand, that spike will continue and it isn't just a, a one-time deal. With their goals, they're very near completion, 100% complete with everything that was going on this past year. The, the public relations strategy with Management Services is, you saw a good portion at the first entree, entree, entree to that with the Brand Library opening. I think the gala opening and, and getting folks to reintroducing the Community to Brand has been hugely successful. And it is, again, very much sustained. The design and construction implementation is very near completion. We should be able to bring that back to you later in, in just a, a short while and so we can start the bidding process and move forward with that momentous project. And then the strategic plan for the arts, as you saw, that was developed and approved and now has unleashed a great deal of excitement in the community for the projects, the RFP that was recently put out on, on a number of the programs that were authored by the department through the Arts and Culture Commission. The, we, we did move forward and, and ask the, the public if they were willing to do the assessment. The answer was no, not at this time. And that's okay. That, that comes back to us later on as we look at cost recovery for all of our different departments. But also the other stretch goal of establishing the Library Foundation, kudos to Cindy Cleary and her team. They got that stretch goal up and running very quickly. When we look to, when we look to, to next year, again, Central Library is going to be the primary project for the, the management of this department in, in the coming year. The notion of, of utilizing, continuing to utilize the technology, especially tablets are increasingly popular in public libraries and the ability to self-serve in our libraries is something that will be a very interesting investment for the city, but something I think that will have a, a good deal of council input, you know, just by way of the usage, by the tools and by the potential for unintended consequences. Something we have to do eyes wide open. Library marketing strategy, very much important, very important to us as we saw what the impact could be for a cohesive, coordinated effort on brand. We have to do that for the entire department, especially as we hope to reintroduce people to the Arts and Entertainment District vis-à-vis the library project, the, the Year Two of the Arts and Culture Commission. Kudos to the council, especially Councilwoman Friedman, for helping to, to help the commission usher them along from arguing and, and maybe not having the, the cohesive vision of what their, what their mission was to come to a point where there's room in, in this diversity spectrum for everybody's interest. I think as they accepted what the, that the sky truly was the limit, when they came to the full council, council gave them very clear direction about what you wanted to see and how you wanted the, the investment in arts and, and culture divvied up into different programs. Boy, oh, boy, they have just seized the moment. And you're seeing it play out in terms of performances, in terms of public art on the utility box program and, and other programs that are up and coming. A, a very unique experience that we had where council said, "This is what we want." Your commission went and is basically giving it right back to you in a way that I think the community is, is very appreciative of. Lastly, the, the cloud-based technology, the integrated library system that we have in coordination with the City of Pasadena and their public library. You approved the, the agreement that'll get us through this procurement and then this coming year, we'll bring you back the overall system. You can see the, the big chunk here, the $5 million for the library program for Central Library. That is, is again, the hallmark of the department this coming year. The fund recap. And then we'll take a very quick look on the home stretch, looking at Management Services. This is the City Manager's Office. This is Internal Audit and Economic Development, although we do, we have broken economic development out. Here are all the KPI. Again, you can see in terms of the council members make up 14.6. The point six is important, of, of, of the overall staffing for the department. 95% complete. The vision and mission statements are in process right now. I believe they're sitting on Ms. Beers's desk, but we will be bringing those to you very... I believe they're sitting on Ms. Beers's desk, but we will be bringing those to you very shortly. Looking to the future, the Everbridge and Social Media Program in terms of mass emergency notification, we've seen that the old system that we had really didn't work, or at least wasn't very utilitarian, because a lot of people don't have or don't rely on their telephones the way they used to. Much is done through mobile technology and through social media, so we are looking to change that to keep up with the times. You saw this already with the website portal for nonprofits and community groups. The notion of a comprehensive annual risk management process, something that the council has asked for from the DIAS, that will be coming back to you in terms of understanding where we have liability and what we can do to mitigate on a proactive basis. External peer review is something critically important for our internal audit function in order to maintain our certifications. Our internal auditors, they will do external reviews on other agencies. We have folks come in and review us. This gives you confidence in the work that is done by the internal audit unit. Vision 2020, the focus on economic development in Montrose and North Glendale in general, is something that we will do ever so slowly, ever so sensitively with the folks, the stakeholders in Montrose and in North Glendale, especially capitalizing off of the North Glendale Community Plan. The white paper on maximization of city assets, this falls under the Economic Development Department. Phil Lanza-Fame and his folks are looking at everything from buildings to properties to infrastructure-like utility poles and wireless antenna, to understand how can we generate revenue in and of the City of Glendale to be used for programs and services. The notion of the office vacancy rate reduction, we had great success in this current year by way of attracting some high-profile tenants. We also lost a few smaller, low-profile tenants, and so we were treading water by way of our office, class A office vacancy rate in the current year. But overall, over a five-year term, we've knocked that vacancy rate down by several percentage points. And again, with high-profile tendencies in buildings that had previously been wholly vacant, specifically, I'm talking about the 207 Good Building.
Where are we at?
We are, I believe, at 19% today, in an average, tri-city average, I believe, of 16%. Phil's shaking his head, yes.
Notting.
Notting his head. When you look at South Glendale Community Plan, something that is spearheaded by the CDD Department, however, utilizing our economic development staff, making sure on the front end that there is an economic development element contained within that plan. Invariably, when we talk about the North Plan, people want to talk about, well, what are we doing by way of business attraction, business recruitment? How does it fit into the overall North Glendale Plan? I think by actually having, calling out a separate element for the South Plan, we are anticipating some of that feedback, and hopefully have a document that's even more user-friendly than the North Plan. When we talk about economic development marketing and materials promotion strategies, we are having good success now with, again, all the social media apparatus, but I think the time has come for us to make an investment, utilizing our new brand has been fully integrated into the overall organization. So when you look at projects that are complete, the Economic Development Agency, we expect, hopefully, if council agrees, to have that approved later on this month. The semi-annual scorecard has been produced, and we're getting tremendous feedback, not only from the region, but also from up and down the state, as folks are using the way our scorecard in cities across California. The promotional materials, we've done a lot in-house, we've had success. I think the time has come for us to make that investment, as I said just a second ago. The Signature Broker Event, the idea that we have a handful, several people working economic development, Phil and his team were quick to realize that we need to leverage our efforts through the brokerage community. Their job is the same as our job, selling Glendale, getting people to come here. And we've had success in drawing them in, telling them exactly what we're looking for, giving them the tools that they need vis-à-vis marketing, promotions, materials, and they are bringing us any number of interesting opportunities, especially for Brand Boulevard in the downtown. The wireless infrastructure plan, that will come back to council. We'll see if ultimately there is a desire to move forward in that direction.
Mr. Choe, Councilman Najarian has to leave, but we still have Quorum, we'll continue.
Okay.
Just don't pass anything after if I leave, okay?
We're trotting out now any number of projects.
And I'll meet with you on just the final. It's Public Works, Police.
Public Works, Police, Home Stretch.
I'll catch up with you.
Yes, sir. And we will wind this down, then, to the notion, we have Department of Completion Notice, the Notice of Completion from the Department of Finance. We're hoping that would draw to an end the entire episode of redevelopment dissolution. As you know, there is some threat to the loan repayment, and so that will still be alive, but we do have the notice for whatever it is worth. In terms of next year, we talked about the South Glendale Plan, the 2020 Program for Montrose, and the Fodell Boulevard beautification for Far North, to make sure that folks recognize that Far North Glendale is indeed a complete part of the City of Glendale. When you look at the revenue generation, the city assets, these were carried over from the previous slide. PD, a whole lot of stuff going on, a transition year as we bring in a new police chief. You can see that we remain a very, very safe community, one that is trusted by our residents and businesses, and you can see it in the numbers. For the amount of officers we have in the field, we are able to maintain, as was pointed out earlier this year, one of the safest cities in the entirety of the United States. You look at our response times, we're doing very well when you look at everything except for pedestrian collisions. That is the one area that we continue to have trouble with, and I know that we are looking at additional means of getting folks' attention that will be more eye-catching and non-traditional, but certainly the council has been directing.
I just want to make a quick comment about this before we go forward, which is, and this is just a comment, and I don't think it needs a response, and this goes for police as well as Public Works. This is one of, and you know this, but this is one of the highest priorities in this city. Safety is a huge priority for our citizens, and traffic safety is everyone's number-one concern. If you find, Chief, and Steve Zern, Public Works Director, that there are projects that you really believe and really have evidence would be helpful, that are not budgeted, please, please bring them back to us, because this is something where I, if it's really a program that works, something that we shouldn't, we should let budget make you say no all the time. We need, you know, we need to find, we will find the money for projects that will help our traffic safety. So both for Public Works in terms of engineering and for Police in terms of whatever programs you come up with, whether you really feel more enforcement is needed in certain areas, please don't just look at your budget and say, we can't afford it. Bring it back to us, let us make those decisions. Along those same lines, there is, as you know, is a call for more crossing guards around the schools. As we reallocate based on potentially losing bodies in the city workforce, I hope that we can find those bodies for those crossing guards. I would, that would be my comment, that I very much would like to see more resources put into the crossing guards around the schools. The parents know when there's a problem, and when they're afraid to let their kids cross the street, there's a problem, and we really have the responsibility to do something about it. So let's get some crossing guards out there, let's put whatever resource we need to into our traffic safety issues, because this is, I can tell you, foremost on the minds of most people in Glendale. Thank you.
And by way of the police, we had a high degree of attainment of the goals. Again, workers' comp is something that continues to nag at us, and long-term injuries and how that impacts our overall budget. The notion of working with CDD, we talked about that already, leveraging the area command structures, we have more eyes and ears in the field looking at quality of life issues. The measurable outcomes for our DNA lab, this is the first year that we have the fully functioning DNA lab. We are getting a tremendous amount of utility out of it, but in its pilot year, in full operation, we're understanding what the scorecard should look like, so that is in progress. But again, we are making full use out of that, and so are some of our surrounding neighbors as we're resolving cases for them. The notion of the Leadership Plan and Phase Two of the departmental reorganization, Chief Castro's come in in a very short amount of time, has been able to assess strengths and weaknesses of the department, and is integrating himself into the community and is paying dividends here. Updated traffic and pedestrian safety strategies, certainly as Councilwoman Friedman had indicated, and as Mayor Sinani had helped spearhead, we've been doing everything from PSAs to the types of outreach through social media, through more traditional types of outreach and human contacts, and actually, in the case of the PSA that the mayor had done, we tag on our own information by way of City of Glendale, but then created in such a way that anybody else, any other church, or service group, or television station, or any other group wants to tag their monologue onto the end of a very well-produced and very dramatic public service announcement, they can. And so hopefully, because they can personalize it to their own organization, they will use it much more frequently. That came out very well, kudos to the GTV Six Group and Tom Lorenz, and certainly to Mr. Sinani. To the extent that we have the customer service project to assess customer service satisfaction levels and public safety perceptions, what that means in shorthand is that we have developed a means of circling back to people that we have provided service to, to see after the fact, after the drama, how satisfied were they? And that'll happen at a watch commander level, and then be able to feed that information up to the chief, and then ultimately to the city council, to make sure that you know that your officers are treating everybody with dignity and respect, providing that exceptional level of customer service. For the coming year, again, focusing on traffic and pedestrian safety, bringing in new tools. I made reference to this, across the country, around the world, people are doing different things that are a little more eye-catching, a little more dramatic, and some might argue maybe not with the degree of gravity or even reverence sometimes with respect to making people safe at intersections, but they get your attention. And so we'll be bringing those kinds of tools back to the city council, as you would be the arbiter of what is and not within bounds. The civilianization of police department functions, this is an effort that the chief has brought forward, trying to find ways to maximize our cost-effectiveness, things that can be done by civilians who are less expensive than sworn officers. We need to be moving in that direction, so a white paper will be forthcoming, we will share that with the city council. And then the utilization for the crime lab, looking at property crimes and the DNA initiative, implementing, as it feeds into the realignment, AB 109 realignment process, and making sure that Part II crimes, that are property-related crimes as opposed to the violent crimes that are Part I, that we can still track those back to folks through, who are out on irrevocable parole. The department, you see the budget, how, $76 million in the current year. We're dropping down just a bit in the coming year. That nets out a lot of different things, most notably the helicopter purchases Bob had mentioned earlier. Overall, we are looking at effectively reducing the number of officer positions that are unfilled, that we can then channel those dollars into other, that have remained consistently unfilled, into other operations, other priorities of the city council. So you get an idea about how the different funds lay out, and then we'll talk about our last department, Public Works. Whole lot of stuff going on in Public Works, a lot of capital investment, you see it happening now out on the streets, whether it's on Canyatta or on Glendale Avenue, but people are really knowing that their tax dollars are at work here in Glendale. One of our larger departments, almost 320 employees, but again, very, very streamlined, very much focused on non-management positions. You see the KPI that are here. Again, a transition year, because we had Steve Zern over both Public Works and GWP, so in terms of looking at strategic goals for Public Works, took our foot off the gas there, as the department operated under the leadership of Mr. Galanian, and Mr. Hargrove, and the other part of the management team, and allowed Steve to take a look at GWP to work there. But still, a good degree of goal attainment, the waste of energy contract and implementation, that has slowed down a bit, as you know. We are prepared, we've gone through the RFP process, we're moving forward at this point with the recommendation. We were hopeful that would occur this fiscal year, it'll likely occur later on this summer. The pavement index, again, folks notice the potholes in the streets, they notice the broken sidewalks. We do a very good job of making sure that this, you know when you're in the City of LA, you know when you're in the City of Glendale. We aren't perfect, but we have very good sidewalks, very good streets, and where we don't, odds are that we're doing a street project right there, just like we are up in northwest Glendale today. We did complete the viability analysis for an exclusive franchise in Montrose Shopping Park, as we get continual complaints from the merchants up there that there is an inconsistency of service, neighbors using somebody else's trash service, and ultimately, things spill out onto the floor. So the idea that we could create enclosures, that we can contain all the trash, create share groups perhaps, so that everybody is paying into the system, and ultimately, there's a level playing field for everyone who has trash service, and thus, the area is much cleaner. We were able to get that done, and we will be coming back to the city council for direction as to whether or not you want to proceed towards doing a franchise in the Montrose Park shopping area. We have the, we finalized, we are looking next year, this coming year, finalized the sequel process for the expansion of Shoal Landfill, very important step for us, and that process is underway now. We are getting comments, I believe the comment period is about to close, Steve?
Yeah, 15.
Yes, 15. And we'll be able to be back in front of you. We've met with neighborhood groups, we're continuing to meet with folks who want to talk, and certainly, we're getting comments from our neighbors across the border in Pasadena. The first year of the pilot program for the conversion technology and digestion program, again, very innovative, very exciting. This could allow us to do any number of things beyond just pumping up our numbers for waste conversion, but also possibly even generate some new revenue by way of powering our new landfill, or our new power plant in the coming years, depending on what the law would allow. But the idea being that we have a landfill, we're making the most use out of it, and that will generate one capacity for our waste load and for the people in our waste shed, but possibly even some funding down the line. The construction of Chevy Chase Sewer Diversion Project, a very significant Public Works project, something that doesn't get nearly the attention that it should, as we are co-owners of our, what's the name of the?
Lagwir.
Lagwir.
Los Angeles Glendale Wastewater.
Wait, give me the acronym, Steve. Lagwir.
Los Angeles Glendale Water Reformation Plan.
There you go. We have the costs of ownership, the opportunity, though, to make sure that we are sustainable for the long term, but it means putting big dollars aside and doing the work that needs to be done in our infrastructure. Fleet management operations, hopefully, we can use technology a little bit better. The faster system will help us manage all of our fleet vehicles a little bit more efficiently, and you saw in the earlier part of the presentation, we are now pumping up the fleet fund, trying to make up for lost time as we've kicked the can down the road during the recessionary years, to make sure that we have the vehicles that we need, and shedding the vehicles that we don't need. A very exhaustive list of all of the different funds that make up the Public Works Department, I think either our second-largest department or our largest department at this point, but certainly our most varied department in terms of what they do, how they do it, where they draw the money from. Steve and his folks are very adept at understanding the ins and outs of all the various funding sources that come in, be they state or federal, and as well as managing all the enterprise funds. Parking Fund and Sewer Fund, we talk about pretty frequently. Refuse Fund, I have to tell the council and community that in the coming year, we will be looking, actually, both at sewer and refuse rates. We haven't had increases in quite some time, and we don't want to repeat the situation that existed with GWP, where we kicked that can just a little too far for too long. And so we have all the fund recap, as you've seen, certainly, to the extent the council has questions, we can address those. Your entire management group is here. By way of the budget calendar, this is study session number two. We talk about priorities, so certainly, if the council wants to talk now, or you want to feed us that information in preparation for the formal hearing on May 20th, the evening of May 20th, you can give us that feedback. But here, we've talked about the overall summary of the department functions, departmental budgets, looking forward to next week, again, new fees, fee changes, the CIP and the GWP CIP as well, with the idea that we would have a budget hearing on the 20th, adoption on the 3rd, all in anticipation of understanding what the state may do with respect to the loan repayment, and understanding that the reorganization that we are negotiating with our associations today, what that may, what impact that may have on the overall organization. So as we've said before, I'll say it again, this is effectively a two-year budget with the real understanding of where we are going forward, taking place at mid-year, call it February of 2015. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions or comments from the council, or we can take your feedback later on.
Well, there are only three of us here, and in short, my priorities haven't changed, and I think it's better to wait until May 20th and discuss it in a more comprehensive manner, when we have at least, hopefully, we have all five, but...
And we make comments throughout the presentation.
Yeah.
They make comments, then.
Certainly, council is very generous with your wisdom in terms of giving us that information, both via email as well as phone call and briefings. I have to say that a good deal of what you saw for the current year's goals are items that came directly from council. that came directly from council.
Okay, so do we need to, a motion to adjourn, or?
Still moved.
Okay, we'll adjourn.